I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is December 16th, 2020, and we will begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our public's, our county public school system, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, we will turn to department updates, and we will begin with Ms. Penny Cottle from the Health Department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for allowing me to be here again today. As you know, every Wednesday, we see the state's metrics color-coded map change and adapt from the week before. We will remain in orange again this week. We, 2.0 is kind of where the metrics number if, for those who may pay attention to that. What that tells us to some extent, I think, is that the things we've been doing in our county, you know, we've, we kind of acted a little more quickly. We've put some things in place that have been a little bit stricter than the state since the summer. And I think that that is playing a part. So I would say that we are seeing some... Staying in orange means, to some extent, that we're stable, but it is not that we're doing well. And, and there's a distinction that I want to make there. So we do know, we know the tools, we have them to reduce the spread of infection. And I would just say to keep those things in mind and to think in terms of what we do outside of our home, what we do outside of work matters. It matters to the people that we work with. It matters to the people in our homes, just as though the things we do within our homes matter to the people outside of them. So think broadly in all of those terms as you make decisions about what you do every day, not just at the holidays or on the holidays, but also rethink about, rethink how you can do your holidays. What can you change to make more, you know, a little bit safer? And that will be different for different people, but we do ask that everyone really think about that very carefully and make the changes that you can make to keep everybody in your home safe and the people that you work with or that you have to engage with otherwise safe as well. Testing is continuing. It's available. Encourage you, if you need to be tested, to do that. The Optum site is, reported to me the other day, that many of the people are saying that they're symptomatic or they think they may have been a close contact to someone. Whether they truly were or not, they're concerned about it. And certainly, those are situations where we want people to be tested. We know that if we're testing the people most likely to be infected, then we're more likely to find, you know, infection, and we want to find it so we can get people into isolation, into quarantine early so that we reduce the risk of unintentional spread of infection. The Optum sites are scheduled through January at this point. The state has indicated that they have secured those into January. The Morton Street Community Site is open. It's taking walk-ins. We encourage you to use that site as well, though we've also changed labs, so hopefully that will result in faster turnaround time for those results as well. We are open Christmas Eve. We will be closed Christmas Day. We're open every Saturday. So let me just go over those hours very quickly. On Monday and Wednesday, the Morton Street site is open eight to three. Regular hours on Tuesday and Friday are 10 to seven, and on Saturdays, nine to two. We will be open on the 24th for Christmas Eve, four hours. We will be closed on the 25th, and we will reopen on the 26th. You can go to scheduling.coronavirus.in.gov to schedule your appointment. So if you need to do that, please do. Schedule your appointment and then go and finish your registration, and that will kind of get you through the process much quicker. But if you were unable to do that, again, they will take walk-ins. They will get you registered and, and signed up. We continue to add some information. We're working right now to add some vaccine information and some testing information to our website, just to make it a little bit easier to find and as things are changing. So stay tuned, we're updating some of that. I think people are paying attention. Vaccine is on the way, and you know, it's in Indiana. It's going into arms right now, and we're pleased about that. But it will take time before we can rely heavily on that vaccine. So we still need to practice our prevention measures. Keep in mind that for individuals getting vaccinated right now, this week, next week, they'll have to be re-vaccinated or get their second dose in three weeks after that, and then it will take a couple of weeks before that immunity is fully built up. So really, we are looking at, you know, five, six weeks from the time somebody starts to that immunization process until they've reached their vaccination capacity and the immunity. But we still need to wear our masks and face coverings even after we've been vaccinated until we really get through this. So stay the course on prevention. The couple of things about vaccine, I just want to share. Frontline healthcare workers, so the people really dealing with people who may be sick, may have COVID-19, those are the first-line healthcare workers, people in long-term care facilities, and they are working very, very hard right now to care for individuals who are infected, our EMS, who are transporting them. Those are the people in that first group to be vaccinated. As vaccine is available and dispensed, then other people will be added to that. Again, frontline healthcare workers. Individuals will receive links. They will receive direct information when they are up, when it's time for them to schedule their appointment. They will, they will receive that information so that they can schedule their appointment. So that's kind of the process. You don't need to go looking for it. When your time is there, you will be contacted. And it will all depend on the, the number of vaccine doses that are available, when it's available, what type of vaccine, and who it's good for, what's the storage. All of those things are a piece of that puzzle that goes into who's vaccinated next. So the last thing that I want to say is, in part of vaccinations and getting people through, the Indiana Department of Homeland Security did send out a survey to businesses for critical infrastructure businesses to try to get some information from them about their personnel and how they can operate, those kinds of things, so that they can look at that and factor that in to these decisions about vaccines. So if you are a critical infrastructure business and you received that survey, please fill it out. It's not spam. I know that we got some questions about that. Please fill that out. It's pretty short. Answer that, and that will help the state determine how to dispense some of the vaccine, and it will provide them with contact, contact information as they do that. And that is what I have today.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. Let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
She's muted.
I sent her a request to unmute. She needs to press a button to release it.
Okay. We need to make sure she stays unmuted for the call. It might be tough for her to go back and forth. Commissioner Giffens, comments, questions?
Yes, I heard you speak recently about the Monroe County Medical Reserve Corps. Would you perhaps share some information about that with everybody?
Absolutely. I'm glad you asked that question. There's so much information we could share, right? We could just talk all day. So the Medical Reserve Corps, kind of a misleading name because it implies everybody that's a volunteer has to be a medical person, and that's not the case. But what the Medical Reserve Corps is, is a group of volunteers ready to serve in emergency situations, and we are in one. So as we look to vaccine clinics for our public, we will need people to work those clinics, and certainly, we need people who can vaccinate. So we need some medical providers, but we need people who can simply hand out paperwork or help people register, get through that. Hopefully, most of the process with the vaccines will be paperless, but we still need people to help people coming in work through that process. We need people to monitor people once they've been vaccinated. So with this vaccine, right now, they're saying, you know, you need to stick around for 15 minutes, in some cases, 30 minutes, just to watch for any adverse reactions. Those are pretty small and, and not really expected, but it's what we need to watch for. So we need people to do that. There's lots of ways in which people can help, whether it's traffic control, paperwork, just monitoring, talking to people, putting them at ease. So a variety of ways that we can use volunteers. You can go to our website and look, click on Medical Reserve Corps, and you can get more information, not only about how it works, but how to sign up. It is very important that we need people to sign up early so that they can get all of the credentialing and all of that information. We know what their, their skills are, what they can do, what they can't do, and we can get that done ahead of time, because when we're in the midst of those clinics, it's much more problematic to add volunteers at that time. So we want to get volunteers signed up now, get that preliminary information handled so that they are ready to go when we need them.
Great. Great point. Thank you for that. And I would say that it is interesting that people, I think, I think there's an idea out there that, oh, once you're vaccinated, you no, no longer have to wear a mask. I mean, there are things we don't know yet, but we're learning about how long the vaccine lasts. We don't know that. We, we don't know if, if people can, can carry the contagion while they're, once, once they're vaccinated, you know, once they've received the vaccination and waited the time period. So there's a lot that's still not known, and so we really have to be careful and thoughtful about folks in our community. I heard a really interesting statistic the other day, and they, I believe this is from the Washington, University of Washington. It said if 95% of Ameri, of Americans wear a mask, 95%, if we have 95% of people wearing masks across the United States, 56,000 lives can be saved between now and April 1st. That is amazing, and it is, it just is a testament to how important this is. It's just a piece of cloth. I, you know, this isn't, this is scientific, this is not political. So please, 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 everybody. And for those of you who are wearing your masks and limiting your contact with the outside world, thank you. We appreciate you. This is how you can be a hero. Be a hero, stay home, stay isolated, don't, you know, don't, don't increase your social interactions just because it's the holidays. Next holiday will be yet much sweeter if we're all around for it. So, and I appreciate that information about the Medical Reserve Corps. That's so important. And it looks like we have Commissioner Jones back off of her mute. So Commissioner Jones, did you have comments or questions?
No, I just want to make sure that you are hearing me. When I tried to unmute, it wasn't working at all.
Yeah, we are hearing you loud and clear.
Great. Hopefully, it'll stay that way.
We'll keep our fingers crossed. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle, and just, just want to say you've been, you've been amazing all year. Can't believe it's already the end of the year. Thank goodness, 2021 has got to be better. And, but just thank you to you and your staff, Dr. Sharp, the board. We appreciate all of you, and everything you've done for our community.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Now let's turn to Allison Moore, Emergency Management.
Good morning. Morning. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak this morning. I have five little updates that I'd like to let the public and the commissioners know. The first is, we have two blood drives scheduled in December. The first is full, but the second still has spots available, and that time, or that date is December 23rd. So if it's something that you can, in fact, make a donation for, then we challenge you to make an appointment at the redcross.org website. Click on the, the zip code, put in the Bloomington zip code, and there are other places as well, but the Monroe County Convention Center will then pop up, and you can schedule an appointment. Through January, they are still offering that free antibodies testing for anyone that does make a blood donation. And if that's something that you're interested in receiving and knowing about the COVID-19, then I challenge you to make that, that appointment as soon as possible. I just wanted to mention, I know Chief Dillard's going to be on the call later, but we do have Santa arriving through many different communities in our, in our county on fire trucks. So if something, I know this year with social distancing, it's another challenge that families have with small children. Normally, there is a visit to, to see Santa, and sometimes, you know, it's just challenging to figure out a way to do that this year. So hopefully, he'll be in your area, and you can step out in your front yard or your front porch with your family and give him a wave. So kudos to our first responders for allowing him to, to have transportation around our community. I also want to mention, just because it will be on January 1st, that will be our January tornado siren. We test our sirens, as always, the first Friday of the month at noon and at 7:00. So it will be on January 1st. We will schedule as, as normal, just because our dispatchers will be working as normal, even though it's that holiday. So I just want the public to know, when they hear those, it is just our normal test. And then we have masks available for anyone in the public that may need a mask. We also have, have face shields. And so if that's something that you need, you can contact our office or any of our fire departments or our trustees offices. We have a list of those, of those places that have masks to hand out to the public throughout our community, and you can give any of them a call and make an appointment to pick up such items. Or if you're a business or a restaurant and you need additional items and need our assistance with that, you're always welcome to contact our office, and we can see if we have something that could serve you or we could connect you with somewhere that can. So feel free to use us as a resource if, if need be. And then lastly, we had our, some snow through the night, and so I'm sure that Ms. Ridge is going to report about our highway trucks, but it has been a long night for them, and we implemented a travel ordinance into an advisory early this morning before the commute. The roads are in pretty good shape now, thanks to our highway guys and a little bit warmer weather once that daylight hit. But we are expected to have more this evening or this afternoon with some sleety rain as well, and so we will keep that advisory up through the afternoon and evening, depending on how things do, in fact, progress. And I encourage you, of course, to sign up for the Monroe County Alert, where we send those advisory messages out so that you will be prepared and know what our road conditions are like in Monroe County. And I encourage anybody that must be out to use precaution, take extra time, and of course, clear the way for our, for our highway workers and our city street workers as they try to get our roads in the, in the best conditions that they can. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore, and we take a second and thank you and Ms. Petroline for such a great job all year long. We appreciate you so much. You've just been an amazing help in every way we could imagine. So thanks for all your great work this year. Let's see if there are comments or questions from Commissioner Jones?
Just thanks so much for all you do, and I hope everyone is being very careful out there in the snow.
Commissioner Giffens?
I just want to repeat the, the blood donation drives. Could you let folks know how many lives have potentially been saved by what's happened here in Monroe County?
Sure. So as of, as of now, we started these drives back in March, and we called them the COVID drives. We had an additional blood loss in our community more than normal due to COVID. And so we started these drives, and between March and now, we have saved almost 1,500 lives. We are the third-highest collector site in the state of Indiana at this time, and the 33rd highest in the U.S. So that's pretty, kudos to those workers, those volunteers, to the Monroe County Convention Center, to all those people that have been able to make those donations, and then, of course, the Red Cross for all of their help in helping us get that organized through our office.
It's a gift of life, isn't it?
It is.
That's an amazing statistic, and I hope you share that again on Friday during the press conference. I'm so proud. Thank you so much. That's great. All right. And with that, we will turn to Ms. Ridge, Public Works, Highway. Good morning.
Good morning. So I don't, I, I know you have a huge agenda, so I'm not going to repeat a lot of what Allison stated. Our crews did start pre-treating yesterday afternoon on hills and curves, things like that. It's something we started last year that we felt kind of made a difference. So then the crews were called in, told to come in at 2:00 a.m. to go to their routes. They have set routes, and it seemed to work. So kudos to them. I know they'll be tired come the end of the day, but we have a lot of new drivers, so actually, it was good to have a small snow like this to get them out there, to see what it's like to sand the roads at night and deal with the, the track or the adverse conditions. So luckily, we don't have school buses out. That's usually a real concern, but, so yeah, it seemed to, everything went well. So kudos to those men out there.
Good deal. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
Guess this is the end of the period where you patch the, all the potholes, right?
Well, we can still get cold patch throughout the winter. So it doesn't, it does not hold like a hot patch, but it's the, it's really the only source that you have in the winter months of being able to use a cold patch into potholes. So of course, after this type of weather, we will have potholes, so that will be what they address. They kind of use their time in the winter to restock the salt and sand after we use it, and then also to get out there and repair some of the potholes. So, and I think this is the last, is this the last commissioner's meeting for the year? Is that right? So thank you for all your support for the department for the year, and I wish you guys happy holidays. And to Angie, she helps me out so much throughout the year. So thank you for being a great group to work with.
Thank you to you and your staff. You're amazing. Yeah, we are amazing. We appreciate everything you've done throughout the year. It's just been so unusual and so many, so many changes and uncertainties, and you've just managed all of them and still came away with community crossing money for 2021. So, which is awesome.
It's a great team to work with, including everybody at the county, all the other department heads, and I know it's been a difficult year, and I hand, hats off to Penny Cottle. I just, I can't imagine the year that she has gone through, and I know I have reached out to her, Elizabeth, so many times and over the months, having, you know, a few 50-plus employees and dealing with COVID, so I sure appreciate their help, too. So, and Angie and Legal, I mean, yeah, we call them on a daily basis.
It's been amazing. It's been an amazing team this year. It's just, yeah, tested in a way we never thought possible, but, but came out ahead. So excellent. Thank you so much. And let's turn now to Mary Elfman, Veteran Service Officer.
Good morning. Wanted to, we received last night information from the Veterans Administration that there is a way for veterans to sign up and express their interest in receiving the vaccine for COVID-19. I have posted that link for the VA website on both my Facebook page and on the VA page part of the Monroe County website. I encourage you to let all of your veterans know, and any veteran within the sound of my voice, they will send you updates and will offer opportunities to answer questions or anything like that about how the VA is handling it. They're working very closely with the CDC and the FDA. The initial plan is to start with, of course, VA healthcare workers and also those veterans who live in extended care facilities. We have quite a large veterans home up in Lafayette, West Lafayette, and so that'll be one of the place, one of the first places for the VA where the vaccine lands. So I just wanted to get that out and let everybody know that.
Great. Good deal. Thank you, Ms. Elfman, and we will speak to you again in a minute. Let me see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
This is, I'm sure, very helpful for veterans. At the same time, I keep on wondering exactly how people who, for one reason or another, don't have internet access are going to find out about their opportunity to get the vaccine.
It's my understanding that their individual clinic, for instance, our Bloomington Clinic, will reach out to each patient as the vaccine becomes available at the clinic. Same with the hospital in Indianapolis, the Martinsville Clinic, Terre Haute. There's VA clinics all over the state, and they will be responsible also for reaching out to their veterans by phone or by mail. So internet access is not required. Good question, Oli, because our rural community is really hurting for internet access.
That's very good you hear.
Excellent. Commissioner Giffens, comments, questions?
No, I've seen Ms. Elfman's sweater reminds me of how she holds an ugly sweater contest each year.
Are you calling it ugly?
I said she holds the... My T-Rex, man. For heaven's sake.
Oli's missing out on this.
I, I'm sorry about that, Commissioner Jones. Maybe I'll take a picture and send it to you.
There we go.
I will probably not do the ugly sweater contest this year as it kind of, COVID-19 is preventing all kinds of fun and games, so. But thank you for noticing my shirt, Commissioner Giffens. We're proud of it.
You are in, you are in the holiday spirit, which is great.
There we go.
We appreciate that.
All right. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. We'll talk to you again in a few minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's see if there's any other, if there's any other staff, department head update.
Looks like we have a hand raised from Barb Uli.
Okay. All right, Ms. Uli, Washington Township trustee.
Hi, Barb Uli. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
I am coming for you, I think, a couple of times today, but first off, just the, in representing the township committees, we have had a steady increase in the amounts that are being requested. It, it's, I think it's a good thing because I think that people are reaching out to the townships. And I know that last week, Kim Alexander, by Tuesday, who normally had four to five assistance calls, had 17 at that point in time. So there are people... had 17 at that point in time. So there are people who are reaching out and they are people who are not necessarily fall within our guidelines that are reaching out for help now, which is really, I think, the intent of the COVID fund was to help those that, you know, are hit not necessarily just because of income levels, but because of COVID concerns and that, you know, COVID doesn't care how much money you make and they don't care how much savings you have. It's become very evident in this month that it's people who are, they're just trying to get by and it's just, it's gotten to the point now where they have to have help. So we've had, we've sent out reimbursement checks to four townships already this month, Perry, Bloomington, Van Buren, and Richland. And I've called out, I've emailed all the other townships to make sure that they do send in their requests to try and finish out the year, make sure everybody that needs assistance is getting assistance. And so in that respect, I would like to request that final of the original grant, the final $25,000 installment, just to ensure that we may get through the rest of this month and the beginning of next month.
Right. That sounds like a great plan and especially given the fact that our next meeting is not until January 6th. So I believe, so that is, you know, quite a long time to wait. And we know that the need is going to be even greater, especially for things like utilities. So if my colleagues are okay with it, we can, yes, I see a yes. Commissioner Jones?
Absolutely. I'm just so glad we can do this.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Uli, and thank you to all the township trustees. It's been really just a fabulous program, working with the county council, putting together this township assistance fund. Ms. Purdy, do you have something to add?
Just going to ask that if Barb could send me her most recent numbers, we'll attach that to the claim process. I'm already reaching out now to council office. They're the ones who actually process the paperwork for us. And hopefully, we will be able to have this check for you to pick up tomorrow. I'll send you an email, Barb, and we'll try to facilitate that. It's always worked out in the past.
Okay, I'll get that done.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Uli, and hang in there. We're going to get to you very shortly for the next item. So good deal. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And again, appreciate all your hard work administering this.
No problem.
Okay, let's see if there's any other department update.
There are no other hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. With that, we will turn to public comment. Public comment for items that are not on our agenda. And it looks like we have Mr. Shelton.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Shelton. On behalf of the chamber, I want to wish you all and your staff happy holidays as this will be the last chance to talk to you before they're over. And then on behalf of CASA, I want to tell everyone that yesterday was a joyous day in Judge Galvin's court. We had the official adoption hearing for a six-year-old and an eight-year-old who had been in various foster homes or with relatives since early 2016. But now they are in a forever loving home. It was quite a celebration. The adopting parents had their family there. They made a medallion to commemorate it for each of them. The children were dressed up. The little guy, the eight-year-old, was in a jacket and tie. They had Christmas lights that were powered by batteries hanging around their necks. I'm sure Judge Galvin enjoyed it as much as they did. But this is the kind of result and impact that a person can have if they decide to serve as a volunteer, as a court-appointed special advocate or CASA. So I want to share that. It's very satisfying to have a case end this way, especially one that went on for so long. We will have the opportunity for you to volunteer in the future. We will have a training starting February 9th, run through March 3rd. The trainings will be virtual. They'll be via Zoom. All interactions with the children or parents or service providers or DCS or via Zoom or some virtual communication mechanism, unless you feel comfortable as time goes on actually interacting face-to-face. So I would invite people who've been thinking about it to think about it really hard. You can go to monroecountycasas.org, click on the volunteer link and get more information. You can also find the application. The process would be you would apply, you would be interviewed by the CASA staff, and then the training will start, as I said, February 9th. So applications will be due right after the start of the new year. So that's not going to be very far away in terms of time that you'll have to devote to thinking about it or researching it. So please do look into that. We need more volunteers. The last I heard, we had about 61 children waiting for a CASA. I'm sure that's gone down some because our fall trainees have been being assigned cases. But there'll definitely be a case ready for you when your training's over. So thank you very much for the opportunity to share this information with the public.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Happy holidays to you and yours. Let's see if there's anyone else that wishes to offer public comment for items not on our agenda.
There are no other hands raised.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Dayton. And with that, we will move on to our next item, please.
Move approval of the minutes for December 9th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Comments, questions, edits?
No.
Okay. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of the minutes for December 9th, 2020?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great. Thank you so much. And we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable December 16th, 2020, and payroll December 18th, 2020.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Miller.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The total for AP claims was $7,904,322.25. $3,456,678.92 was for lit distribution. And of that total amount, $721,223.25 was for public safety lit distribution. Again, that's the distribution of funds. $2,95,366.43 was for Crider and Crider for the profile Parkway extension. $436,188 was for the City of Bloomington for the 2020 city interlocal agreement. And finally, $249,545.35 was for October Wheel and Certax. And as far as payrolls concerned, the total was $1,530,231.33. 70.5% were for the main supplemental and incentive payrolls and the remaining 29.5% were for all payroll-related AP claim items.
Great. Thank you so much. Let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
No, not at this time.
Commissioner Giffens?
I just was shocked when I saw the bottom line. Accounts payable. It all seemed reasonable once I went through it. Thank you.
All right. Is there any public comment on this item? Just go to the bottom of your screen and click on raise hand.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of claims docket accounts payable December 16th and payroll December 18th, 2020?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Happy holidays. All right. And with that, we're going to move on to new business and I'm going to open the public hearing regarding Washington Township entering the Monroe Fire Protection District. And I will turn this over to Mr. Cockrell to begin with.
Be a second. There I am. Yeah, this is something that we've done conceptually quite a bit recently in that we have a process put in place where the townships give presentations to their township members. They work with the current Monroe Fire Protection District to make sure that other current members of that district are aware that this is occurring. We have a process in place where they get this information and we get feedback. This ordinance is substantially identical to the other ordinances that have been approved as part of this process. Just kind of as a reminder, this decision, although being made today, if made today, is not effective until January 1, 2022, and that's a function of state law. I know Mr. Dillard, who is the chief for the Fire Protection District, is in part of this meeting as well as the township trustee for Washington Township. And so this would be to add them to the current Fire Protection District. If approved, they would join at the same time as Benton Township.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Cockrell. Before we turn to Mr. Dillard and Ms. Uli, comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Just that I'm really happy to see the fire district expanding. It appears to be a very good thing for our community.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, with all the meetings that we've all gone to to listen about this, it sounds like there'll be a lot more coverage for people, faster response times. Pleased that the townships are going this route.
Yeah, it's absolutely great. All right. So with that, let's see if Chief Dillard, if he'd like to make any comments or offer any input. You are muted, Mr. Dillard.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'll be brief. Barb has been working on this since almost a year and a half now. And in conversations with her and the township board, we definitely want to see a fire station in Washington Township in 2022. We're going to be working with their board to see construction in 2021 so that we have similar transactions as we've had with the other townships where they bring that infrastructure into the district. So really excited and looking forward. Lots going on. We're slowly getting these mergers completed so that we can start focusing on deploying those additional resources. So thanks for the opportunity.
Right. Thank you, Chief Dillard. If you would stand by for questions, that would be great. See if the public has any. Washington Township trustee Barb Uli, Ms. Uli, did you have anything you wanted to add to this? And you are muted, Ms. Uli.
Sorry. Just to reiterate, it is the plan and goal of Washington Township's board to have a station built within Washington Township in 2021. So we don't have our deed back yet, but it is still with the state. So it's just a matter of, I would assume, at some point in January, closing on that property and then beginning all of the environmental studies that we've kind of pre-done, but getting them officially done. And then, you know, by December of 2021, being able to hand a building over to the district to, again, be able to better serve Washington Township.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Uli. We appreciate you and the hard work of your board and the residents who have participated in this process. So let's go ahead and see if there's any public comment on this item. Ms. Dayton, if you would explain to somebody who may be joining by phone how they may comment.
It appears that we don't actually have anyone joining by phone right now.
Okay, good deal. Thank you. So please raise your hand. Just go to the image at the bottom of the screen.
There are no hands raised.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. And unless there are any objections from my colleagues, I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing regarding Washington Township entering Monroe Fire Protection District. All right. All right. So I will close the public hearing. And now we are ready for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Move to approve ordinance 2020-51 Monroe Fire Protection District addition of Washington Township.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any further comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, I just, I hope people realize too that some of their homeowners insurance may go down once they've joined the fire district.
Yeah. And, you know, I just think this process has worked really well and I want to thank Mr. Cockrell for shepherding these through. We make sure that we provide a lot of public information to township residents so that they have the opportunity to remonstrate. And that's a really important part of this process. Because legally, the commissioners can create a fire district and put townships in them. But we're using this methodical process to ensure that this is what our residents want. And they've been doing their research and they've been asking questions and attending the Zoom meetings or attending the meetings in person that are also on Zoom. So it's been a really great process. And again, many thanks to Washington Township Board and trustee Uli for all your hard work. And I think the residents are going to really get quite a benefit out of this. So we're glad it all worked out. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. And with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2020-51?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three, zero.
Thank you again to everyone for being here. Chief Dillard, thank you for all your hard work. I know it takes a lot to put these budgets together and make this all happen so smoothly. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. And with that, we'll move on to item B.
Move to approve Online Resources, Inc., regarding the Alexander Memorial Restoration. Fund name, Alexander Memorial Fund. Fund number to be decided in the amount of $1,500.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Elfman.
Good morning again, Commissioners. We have had to hunt a little bit because of our 3D modeler not completing the project we need to get our restoration project underway. So we have had to find two other individuals to do basically the same thing that that gentleman was doing for us. The Online Resources is a scanning company who will come to our memorial, digitally scan it, and then work on rebuilding it based on those digital scans. The contract is $1,500 and we suspect that the funds will come from the community foundation into the building restoration fund that is managed by your office and then we'll have Ms. Purdy write a check.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Excellent, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Just really glad to see this back on track.
Well, so are we, so are we.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, wasn't there a portion that you were still looking for some pictures?
Yes, we're still looking for pictures from the northwest corner, the cavalry charge. We're still looking for those. Anybody within the sound of my voice that might just have it in the background of a family photo, we would gladly make a copy of it at our own cost, just so that our sculptor and our digital scanners can look at it and say, oh, this is what it's supposed to look like, because right now it just looks like a blob.
Yeah, yeah, it's worn out. Good, yeah, so it's a good time, especially over the holidays, if you're one to be sentimental and look at photos and things like that, this would be a good time to see if you have an image of the Alexander Memorial somewhere in your photo collection.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, excellent. So let's go ahead and see if there's any public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised.
Great, thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Contract with Online Resources, Inc. for the Alexander Memorial Restoration?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much, and we'll move on to item C.
Move to approve Garrett Miller contract regarding the Alexander Memorial Fund. Fund name: Alexander Memorial Fund. Fund number: To be decided in the amount of $1,500.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second.
So commissioners, this is the second phase of the three-dimensional modeling or sculpting. Mr. Miller is a 3D digital sculptor who will take the scans from Online Resources and turn them into digital sculptors that are fabricators of the different stone quarries can use to make the panels that we need. It again is $1,500, which will be absorbed from the Community Foundation, the Alexander Memorial Fund at the Community Foundation, to the county for a check.
Great.
Apparently Ms. Purdy doesn't write checks.
No, someone else does, but. Excellent. All right, with that, let's see if there are, and we're trying to ensure that we receive the full proceeds of a grant, so we are on a timetable, which is why these contracts have been shifted a bit.
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly right. If we don't meet the Department of Natural Resources, it's actually Department of Historical Preservation, then we will lose that $49,000 and change that they're granting us to complete the masonry work.
All right, other comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
This is just a really interesting process to hear about. Sounds like a whole new way of going about sculptures, or at least one I'm not familiar with.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with it either, but apparently they do this a lot.
Commissioner Giffens?
Just thank you for staying on this.
Yeah, you had a good committee working with you, I know Ms. Elfman.
We do.
Helping with all of this, coordinating all the quarries and donations and everything else, so excellent work.
I would like to recognize Ms. Danielle Beschott Bell, Mr. John Summerlot, Mr. Todd Schnatzmeyer, Ms. Kiesling, Eris, former commissioner, Eris Kiesling, Jenny Tracy is a community member, and Duncan Campbell. Those are the other members of my committee that are working diligently to keep this project on track.
Excellent, thank you for that. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the contract with Derek Miller?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you very much, commissioners, happy holidays.
Great, thank you, happy holidays. All right, with that, we will move on to item D, please.
Move to approve Monroe County Entity Reimbursement Grant COVID-19 Expenses. Fund name: County General. Fund number: 1,000. In the amount of $143,698.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Gregory from the auditor's office.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Thanks for having me here today. I would just like to present the community grants that you are reviewing today to approve for community assistance. We have today $143,698.98 of community assistance going out if approved. And this is just kind of a continuation of the CARES grant, however, the county is providing the support rather than CARES as that grant has ended.
Right, great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And see if there's comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Great that we're able to do this for our community.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, when I went through the accounts payable list, I could see who all had applied, and it just made me feel really good that there was just a really diverse set of entities, nonprofits, businesses, I mean, just, yes, it's making a difference.
I really think it is. People are so grateful to receive the support and, you know, we've had a lot of grateful businesses, you know, just, they really appreciate the commissioners, you know, providing this funding so they can continue on business as usual, as much as they can anyhow, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's been our goal, is to make sure that we have a viable business community that will hopefully bounce back quickly once we get to that sweet spot of herd vaccination and hopefully sooner rather than later, of course, for everybody involved. But we really want to make sure that we have a vibrant economy post-pandemic, and this is an important part of it. It's a small part of what we know are many financial obligations for our area businesses, but it's great to be able to help these small and medium businesses really stay afloat during these really tough times. So it's great, and we do appreciate all the work Ms. Gregory and Ms. Malone have done to really keep all of this together. It's a lot to deal with, and they have other tasks that they do every day. So we do know that you've worked very hard to keep all of these accounts straight and getting these checks out as quickly as possible, and I know they appreciate that as well, so.
Yeah, well, thank you, but thank you for supporting the local community. It's much appreciated.
Yeah, for sure. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item.
There is one hand raised from Jim Shelton.
Great, Mr. Shelton.
Good morning again. On behalf of the chamber, we want to thank you from the bottom of our heart for your efforts in support of the business community. As you know, the business community is part of the lifeblood of our economy, so thank you very much for that and for your staff and the auditor's office, et cetera. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shelton. And I'll just note that we have extended the program into 2021, and we have, as of what would be now nine days ago, we have a total of $322,264.63. And any business or not-for-profit social service agency in our area, anyone in the county, city or not, town or not, is encouraged to apply for assistance. There's going to be a bit of a little longer lag over the holidays because, you know, we have to close out the year, but this, per business entity, per social service agency, you have a cap of up to $30,000 per entity, and that's since our program started in July. But this is to help you cover COVID-related expenses that are not covered by other programs. The one caveat being it cannot be for personnel costs because we just don't have enough money to do that. But hopefully this will help keep our small businesses afloat, and so I thought now's as good a time as any to provide that reminder to our business, our business community. Any other public comments on this item?
There are no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Monroe County Entity Reimbursement Grant COVID-19 Expenses?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, and I think Ollie likes this program too because he just decided to give me a little attention. All right, I will move on to item E, please.
Move to approve the updated Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and we have a second, Ms. Sensensteine.
Morning, commissioners. This updated version of the personnel policy includes some corrections to grammar, misspellings, some links that needed to be updated. And then it also includes changes to sections 5.11 and 6.12, which reference the use of holiday time. And so we added the floating holidays to those sections and then clarified the order of the use of.
Great, thank you so much. Let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, I didn't check it again for type.
All right, let's see if we have, thank you for working on this, and let's see if we have any public comments.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the updated Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
All right, and before you go, Ms. Sensensteine, thank you from all of us for all your hard work all year. It's been a tough year and a strange year, and you have really been a huge help to us in making sure that our employees are safe and healthy, so thank you for your hard work.
No problem, yeah, we're all just rolling with the punches, I think.
We are. That's the way it is, thank you.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays to you, and we will move on to item F.
Move to approve an MOU between probation and the Community Justice Mediation Center, or CGM. Fund name: Lit Special Purpose Fund Number: 1114-0273. In an amount not to exceed $32,000.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Mr. Hatfield.
Good morning. Good morning, thank you, commissioners. This is an MOU that we bring to you each year, at least for the past, I think, five years or so, where we've had a partnership with the Community Justice Mediation Center where they help provide, or they provide victim and offender restoration services through their program with our juvenile clients. This continues that partnership, continues to allow us to send referrals over there and to pay for those services, for those referrals that are much needed, not only to work with our clients, but helps victims as well bring about some meaningful services for them too. So with that, we'd like to ask your support. I believe Liz Grenat from CGM is also on, if you would like to hear from her. Otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you so much. Let's take questions first, and Commissioner Jones?
I just want to say that the Victim and Offender Restoration Program, or BORC, is something that's very near and dear to me. My mother was one of the founders of it, and she often talked about how it seemed to be particularly successful with the teenage clients. They seem to, adolescents seem to seem an understanding of exactly what they were doing when they perpetrated crime.
All right, Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I just, when I was reading through everything, it indicates that there's actual data that talks, you know, that looks at the reduction in recidivism. Can you share any of that information with the community?
You know, I don't have that pulled up in front of me, but there are a couple of studies out. If you go to the Washington State, oh goodness, now I can't remember what, I can send those to the commissioner.
I meant just approximately, it doesn't have to be, yeah.
So, I mean, in general, it does have shown to reduce recidivism for some of the offenders or especially juvenile clients who have participated in the program. So as far as locally goes, we do collect some data in terms of the number of referrals that we send and how those are closed to ensure that we have as many successful cases that we possibly can have. Overall, our rate of recidivism for our juvenile clients is really pretty low. We're fortunate enough to be able to have services like these in the community, to be able to work with our clients as well as our wonderful staff to help move kids in the right direction.
Great, thank you. And let's go ahead and hear from Ms. Grenat from Community Justice Mediation. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much for, once again, considering this request, and I thought maybe I'd just spend a little bit of time just to tell you what we've done this year as we had to move all of our services to the virtual platform and sort of the impact that we've seen, especially in our RJ programs. So I want to kind of start with calling out, and in great gratitude, we had 21 of our CGM mediators who all volunteered to rise to the occasion to work with us to adapt all of our materials so that they'd be more appropriate in a virtual format. They also went through additional training, and then as we've been testing early on, the ways that we were approaching working with the youth in kind of sort of a testing phase in the beginning, they really worked together to improve and refine how we were doing these programs. And I want to read just a little bit, so, you know, there are some, a few limitations that we're finding that aren't as good as we think, some of the interactions that can happen when we're in person, but all in all, we're actually seeing some really new benefits that we weren't expecting. And I'm just going to read just a little bit from a report that our BORC staff member, Nick Philbeck, put together, and he said, "By interacting with youth and families while they are on Zoom at home, CGM's BORC staff has had the unique opportunity..." CGM's BORC staff has had the unique opportunity to engage with these clients in their daily life setting rather than in our more clinical environment at the CGM office. For youth especially, it seems to help build trust more quickly with our mediators and helps them to become more open to the conversations and activities. They enjoy showing us their rooms or items that are important to them. It has also allowed them to more directly reflect on their daily lives. For instance, when reflecting how family members have been impacted by their offenses, young offenders have not only had their parents nearby, which is in the, you know, that's in our normal programming that that happens. Parents are there with them in the first meeting, but also siblings and others who may be important to them. This has allowed us to engage these other people in BORC conversations more organically as well. Or it's sort of created in an urgency with the youth to develop plans to, with us, to how they can talk to the members of their households about how their behavior impacted them and especially how to think about rebuilding trust and making amends. So it's been really, really an interesting process. The other advantage to it is actually our cancellation reschedule rate has gone down drastically. And I think that's partly because for many of the families that are involved in the program, it can be difficult to get to our office, you know, with transportation or issues around other, you know, things that are going on in their families that can get in the way of that. And also, the other thing is access to Zoom has not been an issue. And so we were really grateful for that. But do you have any questions? Just really want to thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Not at this time. Just thank you so much for all your work.
Thanks.
Commissioner Giffens?
And just echo what Commissioner Jones said. It's fabulous.
If I may, real quick, just to answer Commissioner Giffens from earlier, the Washington State Institute of Public Policy, that's where I was looking up while Ms. Grenat was talking. If you get on there and you search for victim offender restoration, they do a very nice kind of setup where they give you a cost-benefit analysis, as well as they do meta-analysis of many different, or several different research projects on victim offender reconciliation or restoration. And both showed a benefit over the cost of applying this type of a program, as well as an effect size for the youth that are participating in it in terms of a reduction in recidivism. It's also noted that programs like these help divert youth from the juvenile justice system as well to try to keep them out of the system in general and refer them to the programs before they ever enter the system.
All right. Thank you. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on approving the MOU between probation and Community Justice Mediation Center?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve calendar year 2021 Department of Correction Community, Correction Community Corrections Grant Contract. Fund, there are three of them. Drug Court Grant, Fund Number 9147, in the amount of $78,855.50. Mental Health Court Grant, Fund Number 9149, in the amount of $24,688. And the Community Corrections Grant, Fund Number 9141, in the amount of $574,646.50, for a total of $677,890.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. The Community Corrections Grant Fund 9141, it looks like that amount, $574,346.50. Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. I know that was a lot to get through. And now we will turn to probation, community corrections. Ms. Stray?
Hi, good morning. Becca Stray, Community Corrections Director and Deputy Chief Probation Officer. We are excited here that 2021 will be our 38th year receiving grant funds from the Department of Correction. The reason there was so much to get through is that in years past, everything has been under one grant. But this year, the Department of Correction required that we break out our grants based on the type of program that we're running. So the first grant is the Community Corrections Grant, which funds our home detention and electronic monitoring programs, as well as our day reporting program and our pre-trial services. The second grant for drug court is for the drug treatment court. The drug treatment court is in its 21st year. And last week, they had their 473rd graduate. And then the third grant is our mental health court grant, which is, mental health court is in its sixth year and has had 18 graduates. I also want to note that as many things have been affected by COVID, so too has the Department of Correction Grant. Typically, they fund us for an entire year. This time, they have funded us for the first six months only, so January through the end of June. And then after the Indiana General Assembly passes the state budget, the Department of Correction will then announce grant awards for the second half of 2021. So we will be back, hopefully, when they make those announcements.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Giffens?
I was surprised at the size of these grants and especially since it's just for six months.
Yes, we're very fortunate.
Thank you so much. And really, great news always coming out of drug court, mental health court, and of course, community corrections overall. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item.
There's one hand raised. Jim Shelton?
Hey, Mr. Shelton?
Hi, thank you very much, probation and Commissioners, for this. This keeps parents, as a casa, this keeps parents available, keeps them out of jail when they have bad decisions, unless it's absolutely necessary that they be incarcerated. It very much helps families. And then, as a chamber member, it helps keep employees available and in the job. I've had cases where without this, the parents would have lost their home because the parent who had earned a living would not have been able to work. So it's a wonderful part of our community corrections program here. So thank you.
Thank you. That's a great point. I appreciate that you made that. Let's see if there's any other public comment on this item.
There are no other hands raised.
Great. Thank you so much. And with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the calendar year 2021 Department of Correction, Community Corrections Grant Contract?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, and we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve the contract between City of Bloomington and BTCC, a subcommittee of YSB. Fund name, donations, BTCC, Fund Number 4111, in an amount of revenue up to $10,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll start with Mr. Malone. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us today. I have Stephanie Solomon, who is the prevention coordinator at YSB, who is going to be speaking about this contract a bit. But we are going into this to, BTCC has implicit bias community practice that has been providing trainings to people within the county, other agencies, MCCSC. And over the past year or so, I believe, we've been communicating with the city after BTCC did do a training for the cabinet of the mayor's office. And they, we are now in agreement, hopefully it'll be approved today, to train all city employees in implicit bias. So I'll let Stephanie take it from there.
All right. Yeah.
Yeah, good morning. Thank you so much for having us. BTCC, a while ago, did the implicit bias training for county department heads, and I know some of you were there. And so we're excited to have this partnership with the city of Bloomington. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any details. I want to confirm that implicit bias training is different than anti-racism training. That feels like an important thing to say in the community at this moment. But I think it is a really, a good start for our community.
Excellent point. Thank you for raising that. Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. This is certainly a wonderful thing to have happening. Would you mind letting the public know exactly what BTCC stands for?
Absolutely. So BTCC is building a thriving compassionate community. It's a network of organizations and individuals looking to address root cause issues. So we do trainings in implicit bias, trauma awareness, dominant narrative, advocacy, training, primary prevention. So we have a wide array of folks involved with kind of our, being a subcommittee and having incredible support from Youth Services Bureau of Monroe County.
Thank you. That was a very helpful explanation.
Commissioner Giffens?
Well, I actually went through your implicit bias training last fall and thought it was quite good. So I'm pleased that you're able to do that locally.
I agree.
Thank you so much.
It's a real community asset, that's for sure. So we appreciate the hard work of everyone involved to keep fine-tuning that program. All right, let's see if there is any public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the contract between the City of Bloomington and BTCC?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays. And our next item, please.
Move to approve National CineMedia Holiday Campaign. Fund number, Safe Place, Fund Name, Safe Place, Fund Number 9103, in the amount of $1,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Nasby from Youth Services Bureau.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, I am Bridget. I am the Shelter Outreach and Safe Place Coordinator for Youth Services of Monroe County. So I just wanted to present this opportunity. National Media, CineMedia is an in-theater advertising opportunity we use to educate and promote the Safe Place program, which is where youth can access our services where we say that yellow and black sign. And a Safe Place commercial is played before every PG-rated movie and above, as well as on the lobby screens. But we've also added an online component this year due to COVID. So I wanted to add that specifically this year. So we will get some returns on that as well. And we also are projecting about 40,000 impressions for this campaign this year. And it should run December 18th through February 11th. I know that was a mistake on the agenda request. The actual contract is December 18th through early February. I'll just chalk that one up to pandemic brain for myself when I was typing this. So I just want to make sure that's clear. It is an agweek campaign.
Right. Thank you so much. That's good. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Just glad to see this happening again.
Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
I had had several questions about some of this. And Ms. Nasby was very gracious in explaining a few things. And would you mind sharing with people why it's PG and above?
Sure. So this was a good question. And really, the reason why, so one, I'll just state that Youth Services Bureau, our licensing is for kids 10 to 17. So that's who we provide services for. However, with Safe Place, we do educate kids about the program and we will assist them if they're outside that range. Yet we have to connect them to other services. Reason being for PG and above is because some of the themes in the commercial will reference, you know, if someone is in like an abusive home, it's just a thematic issue that we want to make sure parents are present if they're youth and seeing that. They're not terrible. They're very youth-appropriate, but they're for older kids, not our little kids. So when I'm out in the community and I educate kids, with especially my older kids, I always tell kids, it might be you, it might be a friend, it might be a younger kid that you know. So we know that kids are educating kids. And with our little kids, we're also educating them if they get lost. Not only can they look for that sign, but they know they can ask police for help. They can ask fire stations as well. So really, with the movies specifically, it's a thematic issue. We just want to make sure it's appropriate for the kids that may be in the movie. But also, we do educate those little kids so we make sure that they know they can get help should they see that sign.
Thank you. Let's see if there's any comments or questions from the public.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cockrell. Will you please call the role on the Contract with National CineMedia Holiday Campaign?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Happy holidays. Next item, please.
Move to approve the Jail Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Fund name, various. Fund number, various. In an amount estimated to be $80,400 over budget.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell, will you please tell us about this?
Yeah, and just to be clear, we pay for our jailers out of more than one fund, the general fund and the lit fund. And so that's why it says various for those, for those different ones. There's also various lines within those that this contract would affect. There are really two different themes going on here. One is kind of a cleanup with the personnel policy changing. We wanted to make sure that this contract language reflects our personnel policy as much as possible. That's why we took out sick days and we put in personal, personal days. That's kind of a minor housekeeping item. The major shift in this is the, how we are going to schedule, put their salary grids and how we're going to pay them differently. Right now, they are on the same bump system as the rest of the county employees with, under that realm. Working with Sam Crowe and the unit members, that's not effective in reducing turnover. Our jail has always had one of the highest turnovers in the county. So with working with Sam and the units, we've kind of explored how to do that. And we came up with a model where everybody would have a base amount and then they would receive a 40 cents, 48 cent an hour raise. And I think the item on the agenda itself doesn't clarify that maybe enough in the actual contracts. So the contract that I'm asking you to approve would have a 48 cent per hour in, let me find that section, section, subsection H, a hourly wage, where it talks about each correctional officer will receive a 48 cent increase, where that's going to say 48 cents per hour increase in the final contract, just to clarify that. And that was basically working with those, with Sam and the, and the unit themselves to try to figure out how to reduce the turnover. And both of them are very convincing to me as your negotiator, that this was the route to go. Looking at the salary impact with the added taxes and retirement, it looks to be an adjustment to the actual budget of just over $80,000, which surprised me, to be honest with you, that that was the amount. But I think that just reflects the turnover we've had, right? You know, we, there, most of the people there. You know, we, we've, there, most of the people there have worked there less than four or five years. And it's, it's just kind of a different work environment. And that's kind of the, what the challenge that we want to solve is getting more people beyond that kind of four or five year or under range, get them to look at it more as a career. And we think that the longer they serve, the more benefit the county gets out of the, out of the service and out of the employee. So we think it's, at the, at the end of the day, this has the potential to cost the county more over time. But I think right now, and I think even then, we'll think that we'll get better value out of those employees if they're there longer. So I think it's a win for us. And I think it, it really is a win for the unit members as well.
Right. Thank you so much. We have Commander Crowe on the, on the, at the meeting here as well. Did you have anything you wanted to add, sir?
No, I think Jeff pretty much summed it up. This is something that, that we've talked to most of our staff about, or we've talked to all of our staff about here. And I think most of them are very much in favor of going with something like this. You know, the, as Jeff said, the jail is a very unique place to work. I think we have to think outside the box at times to try to keep people here, try to raise that level of experience and try to provide a place for career opportunities rather than just a stepping stone. Over the past few years, we've lost a lot of people to other departments within the county. So again, I think this is something that will help keep some of those people here within the jail. So we can keep that experience, gain more experience and, and give a better workplace work environment for those people that are here.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I guess it's not surprising that maybe the jail would experience a bit more turnover. I really hope that this will reduce that. And I'd like to thank Mr. Cockrell and Mr. Crowe and everyone else who worked on this agreement. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Cockrell for clarifying the 48 cents per hour. I kind of wondered what 48 cents per year might do. If it would be very helpful.
Thank you. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I, I, I hope that, I, there's a cost too to having to recruit and train people. So hopefully it'll reduce some of those costs to offset a bit of this additional amount.
And, you know, and, and this is, it's a, it's a difficult job. It's a, it's a vital part of county services, but it is a tough job. And especially with COVID added in, it's, it's been a big year. And, and we just do, we do appreciate Commander Crowe, your work and your staff's work all year long. And I'm glad that this agreement's been reached and it, it seems fair for both sides. So I think it's a good deal. And let's see if there are, if there's any public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised.
Right. Thank you so much. With that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the Jail Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Happy holiday.
Happy holidays. Thank you. All right, we could either commissioners take a quick break right now if you'd like, or we can press on. Does anybody, would anybody like five minutes?
I'm okay with continuing on.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Giffens?
I'm good.
All right, we will press on then, and we'll move on to item K. Thank you.
Move to approve a grant of easement to Duke Energy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, this is an easement that Duke Energy has requested to, to help out a neighboring property owner in a new building near our convention and visitors welcome center. This would just allow them to run the necessary electric line to that new building.
All right, comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, not at this time.
Commissioner Giffens?
Well, I, I wish somebody from Duke Energy were here so that we could express our displeasure at how they hold up things for the county on a regular basis and how much that costs us every time they do that. And to, to give them this easement for a dollar doesn't begin to offset what they've cost us.
I can assure you that I have let the person know those feelings quite well.
Yeah. That's, it's a great point. And I know that Ms. Ridge could probably share a litany of stories about this with the Fortin Pike project and how much utility costs delayed and racked up the costs and inconvenience residents and, yeah.
Caused problems with stormwater, all kinds of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, with that, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. And I don't see a Duke Energy rep on the call either.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the grant of easement to Duke Energy?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Motion is approved, two to one.
Thank you. All right. And with that, we will move on to item L.
Move to approve Resolution 2020-57 to approve financial support for Hoosier Hills Food Bank and Mother Hubbard, Hubbard. Fund Name, County General. Fund Number, 1,000, in the amount of $15,500.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell?
And we've looked at the kind of these issues from time to time over the year. And I, especially this year, I think we had an update from the trustees talking about need of our residents. This is just the commissioners having heard from Hoosiers Hills Food Bank and from Mother Hubbard's cupboard to, that they need additional resources. This resolution would allow $10,000 to go to Hoosier Hills Food Bank to help provide more, more food for needy families. And out of 5,500 to Mother Hubbard's cupboard for the same reason.
All right. Thank you so much. And I will apologize to my colleagues and to the public because I did reach out to these food providers, but I did not reach out to them again. Things have just gotten on top of me this week with my schedule. But I did not reach out to them again to let them know we were going to be talking about it this morning. So I apologize if I have limited their opportunity to talk about this. And they're great programs, but we do appreciate the work of all the folks in the community who help provide food to those in need. And we, we hope that for those of you who are able to contribute to these great organizations, please consider doing so. And I'm sorry that I've deprived them of that opportunity to speak about their agencies. It just kind of, just kind of dawned on me that I never sent them another email to let them know what we were doing. They may be pleasantly surprised. So with that, comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Just that it's really been wonderful to be able to do things to help all of our citizens get through this really difficult time, both with actual physical problems like food and shelter and also economic situations. I'm just very relieved that we're able to do this for everyone. And I would also like to emphasize that it's not only the counties that can make these kinds of donations. Individuals, other organizations could also do that at this time of year. It could mean a lot.
Great point. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
These are both great programs with great people working for them. And, and I think it's important to remind folks that, that if you're going hungry, your immune system drops off as well, which makes you more susceptible to COVID. So part of this is keeping people healthy as well as fed.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. Yeah. Keeping, you know, good nutrition is so, so such an important part of, of a good immune system. So that's a great point. And it's always worth checking in to see if they have any volunteer opportunities, especially over the holidays. And they are both operating safely during COVID-19. But that typically means you're going to be working outside. So just bear that in mind. But they both, there are a number of, again, other programs out there. Pantry 279, Grace Pantry down in Harrisburg. And, and so, you know, go find your local food distribution site and see if they need help, money, volunteer time, whatever it may be. It, it feels really good to give back. So, and this is such an important thing to do. All right, so let's see if there's any public comments on this item.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. And with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on Resolution 2020-57?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much for putting this together for us, very short notice. And we will move on to item M.
Move to approve an addendum to language to Monroe County Government Continuity of Operations Plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Purdy.
Yes, good morning. This recommendation is for while we are operating under our Monroe County Government Continuity of Operations Infectious Disease Plan, is that you want to provide some protection to our new employees who have not earned any benefit time, that are directed to quarantine or self isolate as a result of COVID-19. What this will do would allow them to elect to borrow from future benefit time or possible compensatory time that they might actually earn. This is specific to full-time employees that were hired in 2020 or those that may be hired in 2021 while we're still under this continuity of operations plan. The employee and the department head will need to work with human resources and payroll to ensure we have proper tracking and just to ensure everybody understands what is necessary. Because some of these new employees, they actually be paying for the benefits. So we'll have to make arrangements to ensure the benefits continue to get paid, even if they, if they don't elect to use their benefit time. The other item that we are suggesting is, and it's just to provide some clarification for some departments. And that is government facilities, health, transportation, which is in highway, public safety, are all identified as, as essential infrastructure workers. The CDC does allow for these workers to work if it's deemed necessary by their department head and elected official. If they've been ordered to quarantine, are non symptomatic and have a negative COVID test. The expectation is that they could come back to work and, but they have to comply with all the clean, social distancing and other requirements associated with how we're approaching COVID-19. Additionally, we've added another separate section that does not require the negative COVID test. It's specific to quarantine. So you can't quarantine if you have a positive test and you're in isolation. So quarantine, non symptomatic, for those employees such, and this is specific to highway drivers who are plowing snow. They are able to function completely by themselves in a unit without having interaction with anybody else. And they provide a public safety by ensuring that our, our roads are safe for travel. So this is just making that clear for everyone and so that they understand what the CDC is expecting and requires, and it also helps us keep our employees safe. Any thoughts, questions?
Thank you so much. Commissioner Jones?
This is just, I think, a really good idea, especially where the snowplow drivers are concerned. It is a relief to know that they'll still all be able to get out and work.
Commissioner Giffens?
I've had so many county employees say, say thank you to, you know, to us for keeping things going and for also keeping them employed. And I think this is just another example of how we value our employees. So I'm glad you suggested this, Ms. Purdy.
Yeah, thanks for working on this.
Not a problem.
I know that it was reviewed by our health department as well, of course. And I know that you worked with legal and the sentence Stein, so collaborative effort as always.
Always.
Through the team, the dream teams. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised.
All right. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the motion to approve an addendum to the language for the Monroe County Government Continuity of Operations Infectious Disease Plan?
Commissioner Thomas? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Item N.
Move to approve revised NDOT agreement for Hunter, Hunter's Creek Road Project Phase Two and Three. Local name, I mean, fund name, local road and street, fund number 1169, in the amount of $8,600,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Ridge.
Good morning again. So we had a previous contract with NDOT on this project. However, they called about two weeks ago. And due to some other projects that fall out of LPA funding, they were reaching out to different LPAs that might need a little bit more assistance in their projects and noticed that Monroe County could use a little bit more in the Hunter's Creek Road project that goes to letting in January. So they actually allocated another $553,407.54 to that project for construction. So that brings it to the 80/20 split. So this was revising that additional original contract that we have with them.
Great work. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, just congratulations.
Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens? Yeah, this is good news. Yeah.
Yeah, Monroe County is very fortunate. We have a great relation, working relationship with NDOT. They say that we get our projects done and some of them are shovel ready to, when, you never know when extra funds are going to become available. And if you're ready to move and they have those funds, then they'll re, they'll help allocate it to get that project to completion.
Yeah, amazing work, you and your staff, just always on the ready. And it just seems like more and more good news coming from your department every week. So thank you. All right, so let's see if there's any public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised.
All right, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the revised NDOT agreement for Hunter's Creek Road Project Phase Two and Three?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Right. Thank you so much. Item O.
Move to approve Lock Mueller Group, Inc., Agreement for Construction Inspection Services for the Bicentennial Pathway Project. Fund Name, Sumulative Capital slash Alternative Transportation. Fund Number, 1138, in the amount of $235,700.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Ridge.
Um, so this project is for construction inspection services. Right now, this project is to go to letting in April of 2021. We just finished sending out, signing all of the right of way acquisition forms, which there's, there's 26 parcels, I believe, but they're not huge pieces. It's basically along the roadway. So we hope to get that expedited fast so we can keep this on the letting for April of 2021. We did do RFPs for this. We received seven responses from consultants that were interested in the service. Paul Satterley, our highway engineer, and myself as the ERC for the county LPA projects, did the scoring and Lock Mueller was the highest ranking consultant, so.
Great. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, just glad this is happening.
Commissioner Giffens?
You're impressive, Ms. Ridge. I mean, to keep all these things going and to keep all these balls in the air. This is just amazing. So thank you.
It's a lot of contracts. I'm sure the auditor's office, I am probably one of their worst nightmares.
In a good way, in a good way.
They get to work. Come on, they couldn't get to work.
These are great. This is a great program. So glad we're still working on this, even though the bicentennial was officially in 2018. That's when this all started. But this is the this is a marathon on this one. So appreciate the continued effort. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. And with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Lock Mueller Group Agreement for Construction Inspection Services for the Bicentennial Pathway Project?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. That concludes our new business. And I will note that we don't have any appointments today, but I will state that we plan to make a flurry of them in January 2021. So if you've been thinking about applying to serve on a board or commission for Monroe County, please do so. Just go to co.munro.us. You can see the link on the homepage for boards and commissions. You'll see when you get to that page, all of our boards and commissions, you can look at minutes from past meetings, see if this is a good fit for you to lend your expertise, talent, and time to make Monroe County government even better. And the application is then on the right side of that page. So if you're interested in applying, please do so very soon. We have a lot of applications we are happily looking through. It's it's a great part of our job, but it does take time. And so if you are planning to apply, please do so. Just a note for everyone, government offices are closed December 23rd, 24th, 31st, and January 1st for the holidays. I do want to remind everyone that no matter where you live in Monroe County, you have a township trustee. As you heard at the top of the meeting today, we are providing, in conjunction with the county council, township assistance funding, which means they are going to be able to help you with things like food and shelter and the basic necessities to make sure that you're safe at home. And if you need assistance, please contact your township trustee as soon as possible. And they will be able to help you. They also have insight and access to a large number of programs as well. Also, again, a reminder that we are providing CARES funding directly to businesses and social service agencies. The cap is thirty thousand dollars per entity since July. And we are now at three hundred twenty two thousand two hundred sixty four dollars and sixty three cents in total assistance to keep our economy strong. And a huge thank you to our staff and the commissioner's office as we close out this year. Ms. Purdy, Angie Purdy, Jill Newman, Dina Delwater Myers, and Anita Freeman, thank you. Amazing women. Thank you so much for helping us keep it all together all year long in this crazy, crazy year. Big thank you to legal staff, Dave Schillingly Baker, Jeff Cockrell, our attorney for the commissioners, and Margie Rice as well. We've spent a lot of time together this year on the phone, working together in ways that we didn't couldn't have imagined a year ago. And it's just been an amazing relationship. And we appreciate everyone who works for Monroe County Government, elected officials and staff, apartment heads. You've all been amazing, and you've put up with a lot, and you've been flexible and thoughtful, and you've put the residents first, and you've done a great job. And we can't thank you enough for everything that you do. I will note that our next meeting is going to be January 6, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. And we are anticipating that we're going to be staying on Zoom, barring a change in the governor's orders. I'll turn it over now to Commissioner Jones for additional comments or questions.
Just happy holidays and happy new year, everyone. And looking forward to 2021. It has to be better.
Commissioner Giffens?
I want to say thank you also to all of the staff, the county staff. It's been an amazing year to get through, but we could not have done it without them. And I wish everyone a happy holiday and safe and healthy one as well.
Yep. Happy, safe, healthy, peaceful, wonderful holiday season to all of you. And thanks again to everyone. And with that, we are going to be adjourned. Thanks, everyone.